This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk?
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Our minutes for 10:16:23 and 10:30:23 were received. Any comments? Corrections? The minute was stand as submitted. Board Appointments. I am recommending the following board appointments. Board of Adjustment. Appointment of Carissa Beckwith to an interim term on the Board of Adjustment as an alternate member. Interim term will expire September 30th, 2024. Business Improvement District. Reappointment of Onewa Linden to a first term on the Business Improvement District. Term will expire October 31st, 2027. Appointment of Brienne Harrington to a first term on the Business Improvement District. Term will expire October 31st, 2026. Citizen Conservation Board. Appointment of Robert Jones to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as a citizen member. Term will expire February 28th, 2026. Downtown TIFF Advisory Board. Appointment of Michael Hotman to the Downtown TIFF Advisory Board as a non-owner resident, representative within the district. This is an unexpired term. Golf Advisory Board. Reappointment of Rob Logston to a first full term on the Golf Advisory Board. Term will expire October 31st, 2026. Reappointment of Jack Gregg to a second term on the Golf Advisory Board. Term will expire October 31st, 2026. Helena Public Arts Committee. Appointment of Chelsea Weidman to a first term on the Public Arts Committee. Term will expire December 31st, 2026. Railroad TIFF Advisory Board. Appointment of Caleb Lewis to the Railroad TIFF Advisory Board as a resident within the district. This is an unexpired term. Commissioners, any discussion? Do you have any public comments on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move the following board appointments. The appointment of Carissa Beckwith to an interim term on the Board of Adjustment as an alternate member. Interim term will expire September 30th, 2024. Reappointment of Onawa Linden to a first full term on the Business Improvement District. Term will expire October 31st, 2027. The appointment of Brienne Harrington to a first term on the Business Improvement District. Term will expire October 31st, 2026. The appointment of Robert Jones to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as a citizen member. Term will expire February 28th, 2026. Appointment of Michael Hotman to Downtown TIFF Advisory Board as a non-owner resident representative within the district. This is an unexpired term. Reappointment of Rob Logston to a first full term on the Golf Advisory Board. Term will expire October 31st, 2026. And the reappointment of Jack Gregg to a second term on the Golf Advisory Board. Term will expire October 31st, 2026. The appointment of Chelsea Weedman to a first term on the Helena Public Art Committee. Term will expire December 31st, 2026. And the appointment of Caleb Lewis to the Railroad TIFF Advisory Board as a resident within the district. This is an unexpired term.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consent Agenda, one motion. Change Order 1 for City of Helena Project Number 18-17, 2018 Water Sewer Main Replacement. B, Change Order Number 2 for City of Helena Project Number 19-35, 2019 CIPP Sewer Main Rehabilitation Project. Discussions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do you have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commission proposes... Commissioners? Anything for the good of the office?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just briefly, so obviously we had our first storm of the winter. And I was wondering if the Commission might be interested at our next administrative meeting to get a brief update from staff on... I know the plan is largely unchanged, or probably not changed. But in any case, might give us a little feedback or time to ask questions of them of the winter relative to plowing and such. Thank you.
Thanks. Any others? All right. Report from the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners. Mayor, with your approval, I'd like to invite Director David Knopke into the meeting to give the Commission a status update on the development of the Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement.
Thank you. Director Knopke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Just wanted to give you a quick update. We received a letter from MDT via the... or from the Governor's Office. As you know, as part of the 2020 Decent Census, the Helena urban area had to establish an MPO because it reached the criteria of 50,000 people in the urban area. And this is to receive federal aid, planning, and transit funds as required by the Federal Highway Administration and the Federal Transit. The Governor signed that letter to serve as the formal designate of... He was delegating his approval to... For us to continue or to officially designate, sorry, the Metropolitan Planning Area Boundary. And that was signed on October 26th. The next step of this process is we have an interlocal agreement that we must finalize and a few other agreements that MDT and that come along with the MPO that we'll be finalizing in the next couple of weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Director Knopke. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Dr. Knopke, for that update. Really excited to hear the Governor signed the MPO designation letter. Can you give us an idea of the timeline now for those interlocal agreements? And then do those agreements? Is that where we line out what our future committee structures look like? Or is that determined at a later date? I'm really excited to... I mean, now that the TCC has been disassembled for quite a while now as we prepared for the MPO. But I'm just wondering how quickly we can maybe get moving for the construction season coming up this next year in 2024.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think we can have the... We've been working on these agreements for some time now. There's been a couple tweaks that have been revisions that have been made by MDT and along with our partners in this MPO, the Lewis and Clark County and City of East Helena. I think we're fairly close to getting those done, probably 75% done with those. We have a couple of final revisions that we'll have to send out to the county in East Helena for them to review and approve. And then once we get those back one last time to MDT for their review, and then we'll be bringing those forward to the appropriate commissions to review and approve. We are planning to give the Commission an update on November 15th, a little bit more detailed update of the MPO process. So hopefully by then we'll have the majority of these agreements done and just basically getting signatures. And as far as the establishment of the PCC and the TAC, yes, these agreements that we're working on right now establish what the memberships of those respective committees look like. And you'll see those as we present those on November 15th. And then once we get those approved by the respective commissions, we'll schedule the PCC meeting, which we're hoping to get scheduled before the end of this year so that we can establish the TAC and the bylaws and get moving on this for the new year.
I love that timeline. Thank you.
Any other comments for Director Knopke? Do you have any public comments on this? Well, I don't think we need it, by the way. Is your report done, Manager Burton?
Yes, Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. HCC Representative Denise Roth Barber, you have the floor. Madam Clerk, is she around?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see Ms. Roth Barber online. I do believe Ben Kuiper is present.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, Denise Roth Barber was supposed to give the report, but I can give a brief one. We met on Wednesday. We decided to wait until November 15th, which will be our next meeting to make recommendations for appointments to the HCC to fill the vacant positions. So you'll be seeing that, I believe, November 29th at your administrative meeting. Also, there was a request that we send our updates in writing. We're working on that. We want to kind of develop the best way to do that, and we'll let you know. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments or questions for the representative? Thanks, sir. Regular items. Variance request for extending sewer through the frontage of the property on Washington Street for King's Common Development. Director Leland Anne or City Engineer Jamie Clark, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
This is just a variance to city code to allow the developer to not extend sewer main along the eastern frontage of the property. The engineering department recommends adhering to city code in this case, as we always will for that matter, for the most part. Happy to entertain any questions. Property to the east is owned by the City of Helena, and the properties to the north and east is owned by the city as well. So any future development that may occur on these properties adjoining would... If the main did not get extended, would be... Cost of that will be footed by the city. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So I guess, can you maybe... Is your professional opinion that we deny this variance in that case? That if we did not deny the variance, then the city would end up...
Incur.
Incurring the cost later on when further development occurred?
Mayor and Commission, my staff is always going to recommend adhering to city code because they're there for a reason. I think in this case, the reason why the city would end up footing the bill is because the city owns the properties. At the present time, the property to the immediate east is a regional stormwater pond. But if the city were ever want to develop or put a city shop out there or do something with the property in the future or sell it off, then we would be holding the bag on the sewer main extension in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just a follow-on. The staff recommendation appears to be to approve the variance, so I am...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
A little confused. I hear what you're saying, and I'm just making sure I'm not missing something.
I think the staff... Mayor and Commission, I think the staff recommendation, we would typically just say approve, deny, or table, and let the Commission make the decision. I must have a different copy of the...
Okay.
Mayor, it's my staff wrote it.
Yeah, the packet I'm looking at, which again, perhaps not the right version, appears to say the recommendations to move to approve, but...
Right.
I'm hearing your words and hearing that perhaps that is not your view.
Mayor and Commission, my memo that I have in front of me says move to approve, table, deny the variance request for extending sewer through the frontage of the property on Washington Street for the King's Commons Development.
Perhaps Manager Burton, whose hand is raised, would like to add something.
Manager Burton, you have the floor.
Mayor, it's ready. So that we can...
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion. Maybe one request when it does come back, should the tabling motion be approved. I think it'd be really helpful to have the kind of just a description as to why it would be a disadvantage if we were to approve that variance. We don't have that right now in this memo, but I think that'd be really helpful because that is one thing with variances. If we are going to approve them, then it should be for a good reason and not if there are a number of disadvantages to the public. So with that, I would move to table the variance request for extending the sewer through the frontage of the property of the Washington Street for the King's Common Development.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I guess I'm interested in a couple of things relative to the developer. The first being the impact of... Well, the impact of the variance on the project. And the impact of tabling action that might impact development timelines. And if there's any... I don't know if the... I'm thinking that there are representatives from the developer that might be able to get some... Give us some insight on both those matters.
Mayor and Commission, the developer's representative is here, and I'm sure he's prepared to speak.
Would that be okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Judge Larson, I'm representing Helena King's Commons LLC.
To speak to Commissioner Logan's questions, you know, the impact, we're just... We don't really see the need for this main. We... And, you know, putting it in is an expense, and that gets passed on to, you know, the development and ultimately the people who are going to live there. And so we just think it's a common sense move to make this request. As far as timelines, I mean, we have a little time, and, you know, if you want to put this off for, you know, a meeting that's upcoming, that's, you know, not too far down the road, we can certainly work with that. We really don't want to delay it for months or anything like that, though, so...
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Please.
If I may, this might be more for the manager. So in recommending to us that we table, how far out into the future do you see this coming before us again? Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner, I would table it until the next City Commission meeting.
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk? Do you have any... Well, he just went through the... Do you have any public comments on this topic? Okay. Any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
The motion to table. Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Sidewalk variance request for 724 Custer Avenue. Director Knopke and/or Transportation Engineer Young, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
This is a sidewalk variance request. It's a little unusual. 724 Custer, the property owner has replied for a building permit to construct a car wash east of the Mountain View Co-op Gas Station. The owner is planning on installing sidewalks along Custer, but MDT denied their placement within the right-of-way as required by city code. The Co-op was also told not to install sidewalks within the MDT right-of-way and place it just inside their property line on an easement. So the applicant is requesting this variance to install sidewalks on their property on a public access easement instead of one foot from their property line within the right-of-way. We recommend approval of this variance to allow a public sidewalk to be installed along Custer Avenue on an easement on private property at 724 Custer Avenue. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopke. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So Director Knopke, can you clarify who told them not to build the sidewalks in the right-of-way?
That would be, Mayor and Commissioner, that'd be MDT system impacts.
Okay.
And we have had a discussion with this... With them on this, and they are looking into the issue, but in the interest of time and the willingness of the property owner to install the sidewalks just on their side of the property with a public access easement, that's why we're recommending this approval of this motion.
Okay. So this will not impact future development of... I mean, we know that Custer is obviously on the schedule in terms of some sort of upgrades in the near future, and this isn't going to impact our ability to ensure that it's a safe, thorough fare for pedestrians. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioner, no. This won't impact. This will just provide this next step of connectivity. It might be a little offset, but we'll make those adjustments as the project moves forward. But the sidewalks will be used for that pedestrian connectivity across the Mountain View Co-op and this car wash area.
Okay. And one more question, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopke, is... I'm going to assume that these are... Are these curbside sidewalks since it's an MDT? It's MDT standards?
Mayor and Commission, these sidewalks will be placed along their property boundary with what we will ask for a boulevard sidewalk within the right-of-way.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a sidewalk variance along public sidewalk to be installed along Custer Avenue on an easement of private property at 724 Custer Avenue.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider curb and gutter variance request for 865 Hillsdale Street Number One. Director Knopke and/or Transportation Young, you have the floor.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
The property owner of 865 Hillsdale has requested or has applied for a building permit to construct two condos on this lot of Hillsdale between and Shilohn Streets intersection. The owner's planning to install sidewalks along Hillsdale, but feels that the installation of curb and gutter without a paved roadway would be a waste of resource and likely be removed and replaced in the future. This section of Hillsdale is a bit... It's actually city property, not right-of-way, so it's a little bit narrower than our standard right-of-way would be. So the section of Hillsdale, along with the sections in East and West, are also unimproved and do not have curb gutter or sidewalks along them. But along with, as city code 742, all persons owning our body shall build sidewalks, curb and gutters. So the applicant is requesting a variance not to install the curb and gutter along Hillsdale adjacent to 865 Hillsdale. In lieu of installation, waive their right to protest any future roadway improvement, special improvement districts to construct the road and install curb and gutter. Because of the unimproved nature of the road, of the area, and the narrowness of the city property that's contained... That contains Hillsdale, we are recommending approval of this curb and gutter variance, allowing a waiver of protest for any future SIDs to be signed in lieu of the installation of curb and gutter along Hillsdale. But as I... But the property owner will be installing sidewalks along the frontage of Hillsdale. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopke. Comments from the Commissioner? Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for Director Knopke, it seems like we're getting a lot of these lately in neighborhoods that don't have improved roads. And it seems like clearly there's a lot of... I don't know if I'm using the term correctly, but infill development happening. Do we have a plan for when these roads might be improved? Because I fear that we are missing the opportunity to improve the roads and have the sidewalks we'd like to have installed, just because we don't know when that's going to happen. So my question is, do we have a plan for when, in this case, Hillsdale is going to be improved, or do we just have no plan yet?
Mayor and Commissioners, we are working on that presentation to bring forward to you as far as what our options are for unimproved roadways, whether that is a full, you know, road that doesn't have any features or for those roads that may have sidewalk, curb and gutter, and just not pavement. We're planning on bringing that forward to the Commission at a future admin meeting. We're gonna try for November and to update the Commission on what... How we're heading towards that plan and what our options are.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion. Did you raise your hand? Oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And to just build off of what Director Knopke said a little bit, you know, there's the Woodland Dunbar area on the east side of the fairgrounds where there were water quantity, quality issues. That neighborhood annexed into the city. The initial investments that went into this... Into that neighborhood were an SID to pay for sewer and water improvements, which was the greatest public health issue.
and water improvements, which was the greatest public health issue at the time. All those property owners signed a waiver of right to protest an SID. Most of those water and sewer improvements are now paid for. So this would be an example where on a neighborhood basis, we would take the next step and start talking to the neighborhood about the development of paved streets, stormwater, curb, sidewalks, et cetera. I expect that after the sewer and water improvements are in place after, on the west side, and after we allow them to pay those improvements down, that we would take a similar approach relative to street, stormwater, and sidewalk. Improvements, because they've all waived the right to protest an SID as well, but as Director Knopki has mentioned, we'll come forward to outline those areas with the commission and bring you up to speed on the status of those neighborhoods. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager Burton. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve a curb and gutter variance, allowing a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb and gutter along Hillsdale Street.
Second.
Let's move in second. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider curb, is that a number two? Oh, okay. Just didn't want to go wrong. Consider curb and gutter and sidewalk variance requests for 865 Hillsdale Street number two. Director Knopki, did you have anything?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is again the same property, 865 Hillsdale. This is for the right-of-way along the western side of their property, which is Shilohn. Currently, Shilohn, Shilohn isn't even in place, there's not even any unimprovement roads there, it's just natural ground there. The existing slope of Shilohn, Shilohn is approximately 24%. It's very doubtful, or it's doubtful that in the future that Shilohn may get improved, or it's a long ways down on the list for improvements. So in this case, the applicant is requesting a variance for not to install the curb and gutter or sidewalk along Shilohn until a future roadway can be designed and established. So we recommend approval of this sidewalk variance and curb and gutter variance, allowing for a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of sidewalks, curb and gutter along Shilohn Street, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Director Knopki, so are there property owners to the south that we'll have to worry about in the future?
Mayor and Commissioner, so this property abuts Highland Street to the south. So Highland is again, not even an established, unimproved road, it's just natural ground. It has its share of issues along with grade and so forth, but there are platted lots along Highland to the south of Highland, so this would be, this next number three will address that Highland issue, but there is the potential for infill to the south, south of Highland.
Okay, so I guess maybe a follow-up question. When that happens, and those property owners are obviously going to require access to their property, is that when we have the, I mean, is that part of the improvement conversation, or if the SID conversation happens first, does it matter if there's not development on that Highland side?
Mayor and Commissioner, I think as we're seeing infill occur within the city, especially along some of these areas that we haven't seen in the past, we'll probably see similar to the state 65, where they'll be either installing the utilities and waiting for the next property or the entire block to infill, and at that time, we can require the roadways with the properties as we move forward, lot by lot, or we can defer that into a, as Manager Burton had said, like Woodland-Dunbar, where we do the entire area through an SID to get the remaining infrastructure, whether that's sidewalks, curb and gutter, or roadway, in place through an SID.
Okay. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopki, I think in general, I've said it a number of times, I really, I do not like variances that request no sidewalk at all. This one appears to be exceptional because there is literally no road. I think I'm more inclined to approve ones that modify the type of sidewalk, if there's a sidewalk at all. But listening to your explanation, if I'm understanding correctly, the first request was for the type of sidewalk, the second request is for no sidewalk in a place that's, I mean, it's natural landscape, there's nothing, and the third one is going to be for an area that is, a sidewalk could be put in. Is that accurate for the three?
Mayor and Commissioner, the first one was for a curb and gutter variance along Hillsdale.
Yep.
They are going to install the sidewalks along Hillsdale.
Mm-hmm.
They just didn't want to install the curb and gutter along Hillsdale. The second one that we're on right now is for a variance for the curb and gutter and sidewalk along Shilohn. Shilohn runs north and south along there and basically stops once it gets to Hillsdale. So as you mentioned, it's natural ground going north and south along Shilohn. And then third is going to be a sidewalk and curb and gutter because there is no established roadway or development south on Highland there.
Okay, we don't have the presentation shared, but Commissioner Logan has graciously shared his screen, so I can see that better. And so Highland, it looks like a real road, but the part we're talking about, it doesn't go through.
Correct.
Okay. That is helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission, Mr. Mayor? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopki, thank you for this tonight. I'm looking at the map of 865 Hillsdale that's facing Shilohn. Interesting configuration of these apartments or this property is that, will the front door of 865 Hillsdale face Shilohn, the grassy area where Shilohn kind of ends?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would assume that, but I can give back, I can, I guess, get an answer to confirm that.
Okay, the follow-up, I think, I think, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm getting at is having a sidewalk, if the front door at 865 Hillsdale, I know it's a 24% slope, but the front door going out would potentially, if we didn't approve this, would hit a sidewalk. I'm thinking of ADA compliance. Is that going to be an issue?
The sidewalks will be installed per pro-wagon ADA requirements, and how they get from the front door to the sidewalk would be on the builder.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm Tony Proctor with J Barti Engineers, and I represent the applicant, who's Janelle Day, on this project. So the front doors on this, on this, these condo designs will actually go straight to the north and go straight to Hillsdale. You know, just another, maybe a little bit more clarification, there's a pretty good reason why none of these streets have ever been built, when, you know, city standards require...
A maximum of 10%, there we go, 10% slope, and the maximum, you know, so we can't, you can't approve a street slope that's steeper than 10%. And, you know, for us to design a street in there that actually meets city standards, you end up with like a 25-foot cut on the south end of the street of Shilohn. So, you know, just the practicality of ever having, being able to build a city-standard street in there is, that's just not there. I mean, like I said, there's a reason these streets have never been built, so. Yeah, if you have any questions, I'll be around.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any, go ahead, Manager Burton. I would just like, for the record, the streets as yet haven't been built to city standards, is that they were outside the city in a time. So, we're in a position of having to play catch-up with existing development that occurred under county standards, not city standards. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a, am I sharing the right one? Yes, I will move to approve a sidewalk variance, allowing a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of a sidewalk and curb and gutter along Shilohn Street.
Second. Let's move in second. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Echo. Consider curb and gutter sidewalk variance requests for 865 Hillsdale Street number three. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Again, this is for 865 Hillsdale. This is for their request along Highland. The applicant is requesting a variance not to install curb, gutter, or sidewalks along Highland adjacent to 865 Hillsdale. In lieu of installation, waive their right to protest any future road improvement, special improvement districts to construct the road and install the curb, gutter, and sidewalks. The right-of-way along Highland currently does not have any improvements, and not requiring curb and gutter installation, sidewalk installation, would likely avoid future removal and replacement. Not installing would limit future connectivity in the area, but right now, there is no planned development, as far as we know, as far as infill to the south. That is why we're recommending approval of this variance to allow a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalks along Highland Street frontage of 865 Hillsdale. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a variance, allowing a waiver of protest for any SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb and gutter and sidewalks along Highland Street frontage of 865 Hillsdale.
Second.
Let's move in second. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. First reading, an adoption of the draft ordinance pre-zoned into PLI prior to annexation. Properties related to Mount Helena City Park. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission. Just, give me just a second to get this pulled up. So if you'll indulge me, Mayor Collins, I'd like to present items F and G together, but note that they'll have to be acted on separately. So this is the pre-zone prior to annexation and the resolution of intent to annex. These properties that are related to Mount Helena City Park, these are those pieces that have yet, of course, been included into the city of Helena, but they are part of Mount Helena City Park. So the subject at hand is the pre-zoning and annexation of these properties. I will, whole reading the legal description of these, but they consist of approximately nine total tracks that is anticipated to be pre-zoned and annexed into the city. These are representation maps, vicinity map and zoning map showing those parcels that are subject to the pre-zone request and the annexation. Indicated on the map on the right, showing adjacent to existing PLI property, that is existing Mount Helena City Park, that is in the city. This map shows adjacent rights-of-way that will be included in the annexation request. Not entirely clear, but the dark green is the actual boundary of those tracks that will be included in the city. In the adjacent right-of-ways, rights-of-way that will be included in the annexation is in the light green. Property information or project info? This is generally located west and northwest of that portion of Mount Helena City Park that is currently located in the city. It encompasses approximately 136 acres. It's currently parked in open space, so it is currently used as Mount Helena City Park, just not in the city. In the county, it is own rural residential mixed use, adjacent zoning R2 and R3 to the north, R1, R2, and PUD to the east. To the south is PLI, which includes the current Mount Helena City Park that's in the city. And to the west is unzoned county urban mixed-use residential. Land use designation for these tracks is open space, suburban, and urban, and the property is partially located within the urban standards boundary. On November 20th, we'll actually have a public hearing on these two cases, and I'll do a more in-depth analysis, a presentation for the zoning piece and the annexation. This is just a real quick presentation, just to tee up the draft ordinance to pre-zone and the resolution of intent to annex. So the process steps for this, of course, for all of our annexations, pre-zones required. That sets the zone district in preparation for final annexation. This does ensure compliance with the growth policy, and tonight is the first reading of an ordinance, first passage of an ordinance pre-zoning prior to annexation, that's tonight. Second reading and the public hearing will actually happen on November 20th. This is an annexation, of course, annexation of contiguous government land. State statute lays out several steps for this process to take. First step is a resolution of intent to annex, which we are having and hopefully will take action on this evening. Within that annexation resolution, it actually sets the public hearing as required by state statute. By setting that public hearing, it does initiate 20 days of protest. That correspondence will be directed to city staff, myself and the clerk's office. The second step, the final step, is the final annexation resolution, which will happen after the public hearing on November 20th. To conclude, staff does recommend pre-zone of this, of these tracks, and we recommend first passage of the ordinance. The pre-zone of the PLI, which is public lands and institutions, prior to annexation. All these subject properties known as a portion of Mount Helena City Park, not currently within the city of Helena. And there's a recommended motion, which is approved, to approve first passage of an ordinance, pre-zoning PLI, prior to annexing into the city of Helena. Property legally described as follows, and I won't read all that. And so a recommendation for the annexation piece is, of course, to recommend approval of the ROI to annex and to set the public hearing as outlined in the resolution of intent to annex. And just FYI, that public hearing is for November 20th, 6:00 PM in this room. And the recommended motion is approval of an ordinance, excuse me, approval of a resolution of intent to annex and to set the public hearing as outlined in the resolution of intent to annex. Property legally described as those following tracks, and it does include all adjacent rights-of-way to be into the city of Helena, Montana. include all adjacent rights of way, um, to be into the city of Helena, Montana. Another was quick. Any questions? And as I noted, these will need to be taken.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, no questions, just a brief comment. Really appreciate, um, Director, um, Brink and his staff for moving on this. I know that this has obviously been something of interest to the community, and I'm glad we're getting it done the right way, um, and in a timely fashion, and really appreciate, um, you know, you doing your due diligence and very excited to get this underway.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I, I believe it's a follow-up, but, um, if I'm understanding this correctly, this is the step one, um, in annexing the land into the city of Helena that would allow us to then move forward, um, with the portion of La Grande that is currently used as a pedestrian section. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor and Com, Mayor and Commission, that is correct. Let me go back to this map. I apologize, it's not as clear as I intended it to be. Uh, so La Grande Cannon is there to the north, of course. It doesn't address all the issue. There's still a small portion of La Grande, the, the roadway itself that is outside of the right-of-way that's on property to the north, it's owned by Sussex. So that won't be taken care of until they choose to annex that piece and designate that as open lands to the city. But this takes care of 99% of that right-of-way into the city.
Thank you. Please.
Uh, Director Brink, thank you very much for this, and thank you to your staff and the due diligence that you've put into this, uh, protecting, uh, I, as both Commissioners have said, this is, this is something that's been very important to the public and has been, um, for some, it's been a concern. So thank you very much for protecting that road. Thanks.
Commission, thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance pre-zoning to PLI, public lands and institutions, prior to annexing into the city of Helena, property legally described as parcel one, block seven, eight, 16, and 24 of Highland Park and Lewis and Clark, in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retracement survey filed under doc number 3339312 and parcel two, block 17, 18, 22, and 23 of Highland Park and Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on retracement survey filed under doc number 3331784. And the west half of the southwest quarter of section 26, Township 10 North, range four west, PMM, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, accepting therefrom tract A of certificate of survey filed under doc number 589492T, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, all being known as a portion of Mount Helena City Park.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Resolution of intention to annex properties related to Mount Helena City Park and to set the public hearing. Director Brink?
Uh, Mayor Collins, uh, and Commission, as I noted, uh, this was one presentation. Um, if there's any questions on the annexation piece, I'm more, more than happy to take them, uh, but we're ready for, for any motion on this one.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk? Oh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move for approval of, of resolution of intention to annex and set the public hearing as outlined in the resolution of intent to annex property legally described as parcel I, block seven, eight, 16, and 24 of Highland Park in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retracement survey filed under doc number 3339312 and parcel two, block 17, 18, 22, and 23 of Highland Park in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown in retracement survey filed under doc number 3331784 in the west half of the southwest quarter of section 26, Township 10 North, range four west, PMM, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, accepting therefrom tract A, a certificate of survey filed under doc number 589492T, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and all adjacent rights into the city of Helena, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Adoption of Community Development Public Participation Plan for Montana Land Use Planning Act compliance, SB 382. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Mayor Collins, uh, Commission, thank you. I want to actually turn this presentation over to our Planner One, Stephen Shirley, who actually has worked diligently on this item, and I'll get this PowerPoint started for him.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to present the Community Development Public Participation Plan to you this evening. Uh, the Public Participation Plan is part of the requirements that the city of Helena needs to meet in order to be in compliance with the Montana Land Use Planning Act, Section 6, Public Participation. Section 6 contains five parts, which include the requirement to provide continuous public participation throughout the adoption process of the Montana Land Use Planning Act. The requirement to document and retain all public outreach performed as part of the administrative record. The requirement to provide public notice of when, what, and, um, why all meetings will be held for, uh, working groups or otherwise, um, for the adoption of documents regarding the, uh, required documents in the Montana Land Use Planning Act. Requirements to emphasize that the planning process provides for continuous and extensive public participation, and that the opportunity for public involvement is limited after the adoption of the land use plan, and the requirement to adopt a public participation plan, which brings us here tonight. The key elements of the Public Participation Plan include fulfilling those requirements in parts one through five of section six. Uh, on page 12, we begin doing that, uh, fulfilling, uh, requirements of sections six, uh, parts one, two, and three, A, identifying where to find additional information, documentation, upcoming meeting materials. Uh, section six, three, B, can be found, uh, in, throughout the Public Participation Plan, but also in the infographic that shows adopting participation framework, um, identifying our goals, promises, and what the public can expect from different parts of the planning process. And then fulfilling section six, three, C, um, providing the public with knowledge of the tools that they could expect to see when working on, uh, parts of the different requirements and plans and regulations of the Montana Land Use Planning Act. And then section six, four, uh, the requirement to continuously let the public know that they, that, that the majority of the work will be done upfront during the land use planning process and future land use map adoption process. And then as we go through the subdivision regulations and eventual administrative process, um, in the Montana Land Use Planning Act, that, uh, public participation will continue to shrink. So upfront in the process is where we'd like to see the greatest amount of public participation. And then upon adoption of this, uh, Public Participation Plan, we will continue to provide updates in the future as we adopt, um, new land use plans, future land use maps, and, and also, uh, zoning and subdivision regulations, language which will be included in future amendments, but cannot be right now because they have not yet been drafted. And so the staff recommendation is to adopt the Community Development Public Participation Plan for the city of Helena, Montana, in compliance with the Montana Land Use Planning Act. Any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a question, but just a brief comment. Um, I really appreciated how easy to read this was for the public, this full public participation plan. So I think, hopefully, it will come through to folks as they start wanting to engage in these discussions, but really appreciated the infographics, not too, I mean, there is text, but it's not overwhelming, very easy to understand. So I really appreciate you guys kind of translating the community development speak with laypeople.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioner Dean.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, one minute. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the adoption of the Community Development Department Public Participation Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Are you still up here, uh, Director Brink?
Huh? Yes, Mayor. This is the last time tonight, I promise.
Okay, go ahead.
So tonight is the City of Helena Planning Commission presentation, uh, with, um, potential adoption of a resolution actually creating a new city of Helena Planning Commission. I presented this, uh, last Wednesday to you, but for the interest of, um, public engagement and being totally transparent, I'd like to re, re-present what I presented, but I'll go through quickly. I think I've consolidated some slides, so it's not as, as long as it was, uh, last week. But the Montana Land Use Planning Act, and I'll just keep calling it the Act, um, just to make it easier, um, requires that each local government, um, establish by ordinance resolution, a planning commission. Uh, that planning commission can be a consolidation or a combination of other boards and commissions that we may have, uh, or it can be to create a new planning commission pursuant to this section that's in Montana Land Use Planning Act and disband the existing boards and commissions. Uh, staff proposes to do the latter, and that is to create a new planning commission. And upon full implementation of the Act, um, by May 17th of 2026, we would disband the existing, um, Consolidated City-County Planning Board, uh, Zoning Commission, and Board of Adjustments, uh, with the latter of those, uh, three being rolled into the new planning commission. Uh, initially, it, those functions will exist, and later slide, I'll explain, uh, what that means. As I said, as required by the, by the Act, uh, we're going to create a new planning commission. Why a new planning commission? City of Helena and Lewis Clark County, uh, we currently share a consolidated planning board. Uh, Lewis and Clark County is not required, and they've actually elected not to, at this time, comply with the Planning Act, um, thereby remaining of the requirements of the Montana Subdivision and Planning Act, which we're currently under now, uh, better known as, as requirements for growth policy. Uh, if we designate the, uh, Consolidated Planning Board as a city's planning commission, which we're allowed, uh, that board would essentially be operating under two very separate and distinct land use and planning act, planning acts. Uh, keep in mind, these are citizen planners, they're volunteers, and that's a heavy lift for them to, uh, to manage and traverse two really distinct planning acts, uh, with county work and city work. Uh, so we're proposing, uh, a separate city planning commission. Uh, a planning commission, when it's fully, uh, fully constituted, fully constituted, not initially, uh, will be a combin, combination planning commi, or a combination commission. Uh, and it's, it will take on the roles and functions of the zoning commission and Board of Adjustments, in addition to those that are designated to a planning board, um, as they're existing under the Subdivision Planning Act and under the Land Use Planning Act as well. Uh, under the Act, a planning commission, uh, is, of course, a consolidation of all existing land use boards. Uh, by design, uh, from the state legislature, it is a combination board. Uh, so zoning commission, Board of Adjustments gets rolled into the planning commission. Uh, that board will be eventually responsible for recommendations of all legislative land use and planning decisions, uh, including the land use plan and future land use map, zoning regulations, and the zoning map. Subdivision regulations, that's adoption, implementation, revisions to those documents, and then any other document or, or planning process that you designate, uh, to them. Uh, and then eventually, they'll also hear appe, appeals from the planning officer. As I've noted, uh, a couple times, um, under the Montana Land Use Planning Act, um, planning decisions are now at an administrative level, uh, and that's why, uh, public engagement is so important in the front end, um, with the idea that all that's been vetted initially in terms of appropriate zoning, appropriate designations, appropriate, uh, standards and requirements, uh, that anything that, that comes through from an approval standpoint would already meet those requirements, and it would be approved at administrative level. However, appeals from, from any decision that myself or staff makes would move to the planning commission and then to, uh, city commission. Creating planning commission by resolution with bylaws. So in your packet from last week, I did present the actual bylaws. We never really talked about them. Uh, those will eventually come to you for an overview and a, an approval, uh, but we want to send those to the planning commission first if we constitute a planning commission, um, with any recommended changes, and then those final changes will come to you for final adoption of those bylaws. Uh, as proposed and drafted, the initial planning commission will consist of three members selected by the city commission. Uh, we hope once this planning commission is, uh, is created tonight, that, um, we will start taking applications and interest from those, from citizens, uh, to be appointed to that planning commission, with the intent of that planning commission being set at least by the first of the year, because we anticipate the, uh, the land use plan would start, uh, there shortly after. Uh, work of the planning commission will be assisted and supplemented by key advisors. Uh, we anticipate chairs or vice chairs or other city members of our existing, um, land use boards to, to assist the work of the Planning Commission Act as advisors. Uh, we actually have interest from the planning board to be part of that discussion. So the Consolidated Planning Board wants to be, be a key, uh, key advisor to the planning commission. Initially, the planning commission is going to be tasked with just the land use plan and map, uh, revisions to the zoning ordinance and zoning map, and then any revisions that are, that are needed to the subdivision regulations. We recommend or anticipate that planning commission will meet on the first Thursday of ea, each month at 6:00. Planning Act does require a minimum of, of, a meeting every six months. Uh, and of course, adhering to our, uh, recently adopted Public Participation Pa, Plan, uh, hybrid meetings will, will take place as a s, city policy and as required or allowed by MCA. Moving further, creating a planning commission by resolution with bylaws. The Act allows creation by both, uh, the ordinance resolution must set forth requirements for appointments, terms, qualifications, removals, vacancies, meetings, notice of meetings officers, reimbursement of costs, bylaws, and other requirements determined necessary. Uh, and the draft bylaws do mirror the resolution and adhere to all policies relative to, uh, city of Helena boards and commissions and the requirements of the Act. Prior to Act implementation and compliance, planning commission will be recreated by ordinance. Um, that's when it becomes a consolidated board, uh, with the zoning commission and the Board of Adjustments. Then we'll have the full complement of Act roles and responsibilities, which is the last piece is appeals administrative land use actions. We recommend at that point, um, that membership's made of, um, two, two or four additional members to bring the total to five to seven. Uh, and then at that point, um, the Consolidated City-County Planning Board, uh, would be dissolved as outlined in that inter-local agreement. As I mentioned previously, all existing boards and commissions currently will function as they are today. Uh, we need them intact, uh, because we're still under the requirements of the, um, Subdivision and Planning Act, and will be so until we're fully implementing, or fully implemented with, um, the new Montana Land Use Planning Act. And tonight, as, as Director Knopki indicated, uh, City-County Planning Board is the, uh, MPO, uh, designated authority, uh, in the governor's letter, so we need that, uh, existing body to function. And then at some point in the future, as we get closer to implementation, um, we'll have to have a di, different discussion with MDT about how we're going to, um, designate a new authority for the MPO. So last week, there were some, or last Wednesday, there were several questions asked. Commissioner Shertliff asked a couple, uh, Commissioner Logan asked one. So use of alternates as members, um, the Act doesn't really specifically talk to that. Um, perhaps that would be a valuable, valuable piece when we create a by ordinance, uh, because then it becomes, then it because then it becomes, then it has an appeal function, and it's incumbent that we have a quorum, because appeals, they're time-sensitive. So perhaps, in the future, there may be something we can add as an alternative, have alternate members. If it's a concern now that we don't have enough, three's just a recommendation. We could move to five to seven now and be sure that we can have a quorum as we're moving towards Act implementation. Term expirations. I indicated that May 17th was the term expiration of these members. There are three parts that I missed. That is upon, so that's that date, or upon creation of the planning commission by ordinance, or until reappointed, or until successors are appointed and qualified. So those term limits, they're consistent across the board in terms of some of our other boards and commissions. May 17th, unique, because that is the date we have to be in compliance with the Act. And then Commissioner Logan asked about updates to the boards and commissions. We did provide an update to the zoning commission and planning board, but I failed to provide an update to the Board of Adjustments. They've not been updated. So we will, their November meeting is a really heavy agenda, so we won't bring this up at that meeting, but we'll, at their December meeting or their first one after November, make a point to update that board as well. Excuse me. So, conclusion. Staff does recommend that we adopt a resolution creating a new planning commission for the city of Helena, Montana.
Thank you, Director Brink. Comments from the commission?
I do have one brief question.
Go ahead.
Director Brink, is there interest from some of the members of the Consolidated City-County Planning Board to maybe be on this board? I, it's one group that always takes their job so seriously and is very thoughtful, and I'd hate to lose their interest in being part of our advisory committees. So I'm wondering if that's a possibility.
Mayor, Commissioner Dean. I won't name names, and I do not want to be accused of pilfering members from any of our boards and commissions, because they're still valuable. We still need them. But there has been some interest from members of a couple of our boards and commissions to be part of the planning commission.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead.
Director Brink, you had said tonight we could pick five or seven members rather than three. I guess, what would be your professional opinion or recommendation?
Mayor, Commissioner Shertliff. So we recommended three initially because it becomes more nimble as we work through this unknown process. It's new to us, too. Three just seem to be easier to navigate. However, there is a con to that, one being a quorum, well, a couple cons. One being a quorum. Tough to assemble a quorum of three on a consistent basis. And two, are we actually getting a good cross-section of the community just by three members? Five, seven? I wouldn't have a professional opinion either way. Three was because it was nimble. Seven absolutely gets a better cross-section of the public. And that may be the final makeup of the board, and it might be better, easier to constitute the board when you don't have to pick new members at that point. You've got them, you just reappoint them.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the adoption of a resolution creating the City of Helena Planning Commission.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, consider a resolution authorizing the participation in the Board of Investments of the State of Montana under adjustable rate municipal finance consolidation act, extendable bond interlap loan program, approving the form and terms of the loan agreement and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related thereto.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Barbara Walsh. I'm the city comptroller. I'm substituting for Director Danielson. So, Mayor had said some of this, but we are considering, we'd like you to consider a resolution authorizing the participation in the Board of Investments of the State of Montana annual adjustable rate municipal finance consolidation act, extendable bond, short intercap loan program, approving the form and terms of the loan agreement and authorizing the execution and the delivery of documents related thereto. The city commission has before it a resolution and loan terms to approve to buy 55 new golf carts through an intercap loan with the Board of Investments of a principal amount of $184,195 to be paid over 10 years. The City of Helena Commissioners approved the purchase of a fleet in the fiscal year '23 budget and carried over to the fiscal year '24 budget with financing from the Montana Board of Investments. The total quote received from Mason Golf Car Company in Gary, Nebraska for the 55 Yamaha golf carts was $335,445, which is $6,099 per unit. They gave us a discount of $151,250 for the trade-ins of the existing carts that we have. So it ended up with $184,195. The loan shall bear interest at the initial rate of 5.75% per annum through February 2024, starting February 15th, 2024. And it will be adjusted every year after that based on the loan rates that the BOI give out. The first payment will be in February of this year for $3,009, and it will be paid with the approved budget appropriation authority that was given to the golf course fund. So we recommend that you approve the resolution and the loan terms to finance replacement golf cart fleet of 55 carts for the Bill Robert Golf Course. I can answer any other questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a quick comment. It's all, we approved this all in advance. I just wanted to take a moment on the disadvantage that was highlighted and just being mindful as we move forward into budget season, that every time we have a fund that increases their debt service, this will now be up to approximately $200,000 a year, that we are mindful when we're budgeting, that we keep increasing debt service, which limits our ability in other funds to do other things. So I just wanted to flag that, but thank you for the work on this.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Is there any public comment? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, there is no public comment online.
Okay, seeing no other public comment. Any final discussion? I'll entertain a motion.